Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the December 3rd Business Meeting of the Webster Board of Education. Would everyone please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all. Thank you. I don't believe we have any changes to the agenda, but just for everyone's any of the viewing public's information, we do adjourn and move into a workshop at the conclusion of the business portion of the meeting. And as a point of reference for people as well, the student liaisons, Amy Colley and Michael Riddell will have delivered their liaison report via a YouTube video, which will also be posted along with this meeting. And we thank them very much for doing so in the interest of time, and they both did an outstanding job. So we know what's going on at both high schools and all the activities related to the holidays. So we appreciate their time very much in doing that.
Hello, everyone. As this is the first time I will be presenting to you all this school year, I figured it would be good to introduce myself again. My name is Amy Colley. I am a senior this year, and this will be my fourth year serving as our Webster Thomas Student Board Liaison. Quickly, I would just like to express how grateful I am to have had this opportunity for the past four years. I'm so excited for you to meet Charisma Ferris and Lauren White, who will be taking over for me once I am off at college. They are absolutely wonderful. As our Titans have just returned from Thanksgiving break, they are all well-rested, well-fed, and ready to take on quarter two. To give you a little recap, we finished October off with our Fall Fest. Since we were unable to have a typical homecoming week this year, our fantastic Student Council members put together a week of fall festivities. The 2025 freshman class had the most student participation. This meant that Student Council was able to make a donation to Lollipop Farms on their behalf, which was just so cool. Entering into the month of November, we are all reminded to continue our efforts to keep those around us safe, both inside and outside of school. While some things inevitably have been changed, groups like the Thomas Ski and Snowboard Club and Nordic Skiing Team are on track to still happen this year with slight modifications. We can all identify with the feeling of frustration that COVID has brought upon us, but here at Thomas, we do our best to keep moving forward and focus on the good. We are excited to celebrate with our girls' field hockey team after they won the sectional championships 3-0 on Monday, November 16th. In addition to our field hockey girls, we are also so proud of Thomas Senior Dana Witty. Dana is a Thomas varsity swim athlete, and after a big win at sectionals, she was named Swimmer of the Year for Section 5, which is a huge honor. We are so proud of all of these hard-working student athletes. Even in the midst of difficult times like these, our students are still finding ways to serve others in our community. We are currently working with Making Spirits Bright to help families in our community who are in need during this holiday season. The pandemic has been extremely hard on some of these families, so we will be collecting food, personal care items, cleaning supplies, and mattresses. If you or anyone you know would like to donate to this awesome cause, please do so by December 4th. There will be a donation bin outside the North Cafe. We are also currently hosting our NHS Food Drive. Non-perishable goods will be accepted from now until December 18th outside the cafeteria. That's all for me. Thank you so much for your time, and I hope you have a wonderful rest of your day.
Hi, everyone. I can't wait to brief you on how Schrader's been doing recently. So here we go. So to start off with, the Morning Show has greatly expanded over the last couple of weeks. It now features a Student Artist of the Week along with an Athlete of the Week right on the Morning Show. There are new segments as well, such as Music Catch-Up, Schrader Feud, Motivational Monday, and What's the Tea with Russell G. This great content will be available on the Schrader Morning Show, on their Twitter @SchraderMorningShow, and their Instagram @SchraderMorningShow as well. The Morning Show team is extremely proud of the hard work from all the new students that have joined recently, and these students are super dedicated to providing these segments and all of the new additions to the Morning Show. In other news, some financial lit classes that we have here are currently in first place in the National Budget Challenge. There are a total of 83 teams across the country, and currently, we, like I said, are in first place. So congratulations to Ms. Kelz, Financial Literacy Class, and we hope to stay in first in the coming weeks. We also have a Colin Montesanto Memorial Blood Drive coming up. And actually, sorry, this was the past Saturday, November 28th, and we hosted this blood drive in Memorial for Colin. He graduated Schrader in 2014, and he tragically lost his life in an accident, but we named the blood drive in his honor, and now the blood drive is one of the most popular in Monroe County all year, actually. There were over 100 donors recently, so that was really good, super successful, and a great cause. And finally, a little bit of news from Student Council. Brooke and I attended LEED Spark over the weekend, and that was really great. It was a leadership conference. Normally, Student Council goes to a Chicago Leadership Conference, also held by LEED, but obviously, with the circumstances, we couldn't do that this year. So over 1,000 students attended virtually from many countries and almost all of the United States, and we all had a great time. We learned a lot about leadership and how to stay connected to our student base over these times, and we can't wait to implement some of the ideas that we learned. So thank you for taking the time, and I can't wait to see you next meeting.
We do not have any speakers, although perhaps we will. Our next meeting is January 21st. So having said all that, Brian Freeman will move right into the August and September 2020 Treasures Reports, please.
Sure. So let me share a screen real quick. Just wanted to point out a couple. So we've got two months in July and August. August, not a lot happens in August. Just going to point out a couple of things. You'll see we have capital project expenditures. Our last quarter sales tax came in in August, and then September, you start to see our tax revenue start to really come in for the month. We get, start receiving payments usually around the middle of the month from Webster and Penfield. Pilot payments that go out start to trickle in in this month. School lunch revenue, you'll still show a deficit. You'll see that. For, you'll actually see that straight through November. We actually today got our first payment for school lunch dating back from the summer, September and October. So you're going to see those run deficits until you see the December Treasures Report. And the revenues you see in the federal fund are registrations for Wonder Care and other continuing ed programs, because our federal grants have not been approved yet, and we're still waiting on that, and so we can't apply for funding until that happens. Other than that, cash flow's still in a strong position. It could be stronger if the capital fund wasn't borrowing money for the projects, and the school lunch deficits right now floating some money over there until they realized, as you could see on this position. But total fund balances overall are remaining stable, and you won't see, like I said, we didn't do any investing until the month of October, until tax revenue arrived, so you'll see that. So other than that, not much else going on with the Treasures Reports. Any questions on any of them? Tammy, it looks like you're on mute, and I thought you were trying to say something.
Sorry. Yes, I was. I was trying to be quiet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you had a question.
I did. No, I just wanted to say, I appreciate the executive summary. Just as a heads up of what to look for, I think the format is, it's just a little easier to read. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I like it.
This was a light suggestion.
Projections for sales tax revenue? Do you have a sense that it has been coming back, and you're thinking it's gonna, we're not going to take much of a hit there, or any thoughts?
So what we are showing right here is for the actual that we received for last quarter of 1920. So we have not yet seen what the, our first quarter, which is the third quarter of the county fiscal year, we haven't seen what that's going to be. I imagine it's going to be probably flat to maybe slightly below what it was last year. But we haven't seen that number yet.
Okay, thanks.
Anything further for Brian? Can we have a motion then to accept the Treasures Reports as presented?
So moved.
Saff, and a second by Maria, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Brian.
Yes, thank you. And then also moving on with Brian, the budget development calendar.
So I'm going to wrap that up into the whole kind of budget discussion. I have it linked into the presentation as well, so I could discuss that. But I just wanted to take you through kind of what we know so far, what's going to be happening, and go from there. So our budget, you know, we're kind of delayed. We don't know what's going to happen. We don't, I mean, right now, we're working on the, we don't know what's happening for this current fiscal year, so how can we start talking about next fiscal year? So just look at the financial picture, what we are hearing on state aid, what the tax cap could look like, and then the pension benefits and the process we have kind of outlined for this year. So first of all, let's take a look at the financial picture. Who remembers look-back periods when the governor rolled those out last spring? Do those even matter anymore? Because there has been nothing tied to these look-back periods, because the third of the four look-back periods is closely approaching, and we get no report, no update. So I don't even think they matter anymore. To be honest with you, these look-back periods as benchmarks that we were supposed to get these rolling projections as we go along. What we do know is in August, the state withheld roughly $1 million of our 1920 aid that was delayed based on the state fiscal cycle after our books were closed. And we discussed that in the summer and as part of the Audit Committee as well. We do know the state's withholding 20% of our grant amounts, so the grants that have been approved, like Teacher Center and UPK, 20% is being told is being withheld. The minimal summertime food service claims we did get are being withheld, and we don't really know on the bulk of our state aid payments what's going to happen there. We could start verifying that when the output reports come out, which actually got released today. Just haven't had a chance to do some reconciliation. But then again, with that, we don't get the bulk of our state aid until March to do a true comparison, so a couple of months away there. What's one of the worst things that the state has done? A few Fridays ago, they released a transportation memo that any expenses incurred during the spring shutdown that did not directly involve transporting students will not be allowable for aid. So many districts use their buses to deliver instructional materials, deliver computers, deliver meals used as community hotspots and neighborhoods that had poor internet. All that was, is being denied as being aidable. Not a lot of details coming through that, but just worst-case scenario, we spent $2.8 million in that timeframe. That would be a loss of $1.7 million in aid. More to come on that. I'm sure they already said they're advocating for this not to go through. The governor even said himself that they were going to look to adjust that. So it was just kind of interesting. They chose that considering two of the major mandates when we shut down were directly tied to continuing to pay people, keeping them on call because we were going two weeks to two weeks, and then the state DOT was coming in twice a week to inspect our buses to make sure they were fleet-ready. So if they said change the brakes, we had to change the brakes based on what their inspection said. So it was kind of interesting. They picked on that one. Tax levy limit, what we're seeing right now, our tax-based growth factor was released a couple of weeks ago, and that's a 1.17% increase. That's year-over-year increase in assessed value. We are the third highest in the county. The average was just about 0.66% for all the growth factors. So we do benefit there with the formula of having a growth factor. Consumer Price Index released, will be released in January. That is another huge part of the formula. That's trending to be around 1.4%. This is the part of the formula where everybody says this is the 2% cap. It's either 2% or lower. So right now, it's trending to be lower. Last year was about 1.8. This month, we're working through our debt on the project to determine what capital exclusions are going to happen. This is also going to be the second year of our BOSI's project, which will expand our exclusions that we got to do start last year, and we'll have a draft early in February what the tax levy limit looks like for the board and for the community. The budget process, obviously, it's been postponed. Normally, we kick things off and start having conversations in around Halloween, beginning of November, but right now, there's just too many unknown factors to really go through a full budget process. And, you know, a classic Yogi Bear, it's tough to make predictions, especially about the future, when we have so little to go on. I think really what's going to start our budget process is what the governor says come January with his state budget process. A lot of things will just spin naturally off of there. Like I said, we have to wait till January. We're going to expect some sort of aid cut. But I did want to point out a silver lining in Wall Street. I think you guys have heard me say this before. Wall Street is, controls New York State's economy, and we are very dependent on revenues generated there. And there was a little nugget buried in a November fiscal report that really shows some conflicting issues between the comptroller and the governor's numbers. Comptrollers actually have a little bit more positivity, doesn't have a massive deficit that the governor's office is implying that's going to be there, because he is actually taking into account that Wall Street revenues have not decreased. That industry has not taken a huge hit, and it's a huge driver in New York State. So maybe it won't be as bad of an overall financial picture for the state as we think we do. You know, we're losing things like sales tax. New York City is losing a lot of the tourism dollars from limited travel, but the main economic driver of New York, New York City and the state is Wall Street. And so there's some positivity there. So I'm trying to be hopeful and take a silver lining out of everything else, and I just wanted to pass that along. What we do know, some parts of our budget are coming into focus. Toilet paper is a hot commodity, so let's try to look through and see what we do know. The pension systems in this TRS is kind of interesting. The projected rate is between 9.5 and 10, not significantly increasing, which had Wall Street not been successful in the last year, you would have seen this go up significantly. So this year is 9.53, so essentially, it's flat. So we could project it's a minor increase, if anything, and it's a huge budget win right off, right off the start, that TRS is not jumping by a half a million dollars or three-quarters of a million dollars like it has in some other very tough fiscal climates. ERS is going from, is going to 14.9. It's currently 14.6. We'll see a small increase there. Like you said, anybody that gets minimum wage, anybody that's part-time, that works for a district, has the ability to join the retirement system, and so that's one of the benefits, you know, benefits of working for a public entity. So I think we see a little bit more as the salaries go up because of that. We see the pension cost increase as well, but like, once again, that is basically flat and not really another budgetary strain. So we're off to a good start when it comes to the pension systems. Our benefits, that's another, you know, huge stressor. Our retiree plans stayed flat for the most part going forward. The Medicare, the over 65 plans. You know, things are getting competitive in that market, so I think we're seeing that, that our Medicare, our classic blue, over 65 plans stayed flat. Our active plans, you know, we're going to see a little bit larger increase, and we're planning on that because of backlog of COVID-delayed procedures. Our actuaries that work for the plan are anticipating an increase in those elective surgeries for the next year that were postponed. You're going to see more people. You're going to see more things try to get pushed through that were delayed or by the shutdown when the hospitals and doctor's offices closed down. So that is something that was taken into account when they set the rates for next year. Still not, you know, ridiculously high in the 10% to 12%, but somewhere in that 4% to 8% range, depending on which plan it is. So budget stressors, looking into that crystal ball, what's going to happen? Post-COVID needs, when we talk budget, is there going to be a need for more intervention services because we've had a different schedule? Are we going to see additional special education requests on the other side of this? Aid cuts, how do we adapt to that? And then, you know, press conference to press conference, what's going to be required to schools after the next thing? What are we going to do? Never in a million years would I have thought two Fridays ago that I'd be learning how to swab my nose and wait 15 minutes to get trained on how to do, you know, a test for viral. That's not something I ever possibly imagined or learned in admin school, but, you know, it gives me a starting point to say, what's going to be next? And what mandate is going to be on schools, and how's the budgetary impact? I think anytime we're talking now, it's all about flexibility and creating some conservative budgeting to be able to respond to things like those going forward.
Brian, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay, so you were talking, going back a slide, you were talking about the healthcare plans. Wouldn't there have been a decent amount of savings this year because surgeries weren't, elective surgeries weren't taking place?
Yeah, that is correct. So for one quarter of the 2020 fiscal, yeah, because they're on the federal, we're on the federal, January to December. So that, in essence, what would have been the second quarter, that April, May, June, did see savings in costs. And so we will, we don't, we already set our rates, so we don't see that dollar-for-dollar rate. The plan sees a savings in expenses, but we are realizing that because we're paying the rates that were set pre-COVID, if that makes sense.
Well, it makes sense, but it doesn't sound right.
They're not going to do a plan, a mid-year plan adjustment. So when we were sitting here last year setting the rates, the rates went out, if I remember off the top of my head, at like around 6.5% for the following year. So within that 6.5%, we were saving overall on claims as part of the consortium. So for one quarter, we saved a significant amount on claims overall for the consortium, but our rates didn't change within that framework. We were still paying the same amount on all the plans.
Yeah, but I thought we were self-funded, so if we didn't have as many expenses, then, I mean, where's that money going?
It's all staying within the plan.
Within, meaning the consortium?
The consortium owns, yeah, the, all 19 of us together, our claims, we had the revenue. We're all paying our 6.5% increase, and we're all paying in, but we, there's the delta there that's sitting for all of us to utilize.
So it's a reserve?
It's, in essence, yes.
Okay. So it's still our money. We're just...
Yep, it's still our money, and it became, in essence, a one-quarter of extra surplus within the planned budget.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Yep. So the updated budget process, just a couple dates to point out for everyone. Once this loads here, I have it linked. February 11th, that's our tax levy limit presentation. We'll review what the governor had to say at the end of January, if that's available. As always, March 1 is, to the comptroller, we have to put our tax levy limit out there. Doesn't mean we can't adjust it, but it needs to be out there by March 1. April 15th is where we're projecting to do for budget adoption. So that would make April 16th our property tax report card due date. May 6th is our budget hearing, and May 18th would be budget vote day. And we're, hopefully, Cindy and I are planning that this is going to be a normal budget vote process and cycle, which will reduce a lot of our licking and stamping and paperwork, and could just do it the old traditional style and welcome people over to Schrader and scan your ballots and go from there. So we're knocking on wood that that's going to be possible. I think it will because the revote for the districts that did revote over the summer were allowed to do it in person. So what does our budget process look like? You know, in January, we're going to talk about our per-people allocations with the buildings and programs. We'll expect to see our first state aid look. We'll look to finalize the tax cap data. We'll begin our budget advisory meetings, look at priorities. February, the tax cap calculation, finalize our building budgets, continue the budget advisory meetings, and then in March, we'll have our workshops. Hopefully, we'll have some legislative budgets around state aid done. We'll submit our tax cap and work on recommending a budget for adoption in April. And then just some of our priorities aligned to the core beliefs, aligns with mission and vision, preserving fiscal integrity, looking for efficiencies, investing in PD and our programs. Any questions on that? That's just kind of a quick kickoff overview of what I'm seeing on the budget front for right now.
So it may be premature to ask or consider the entire calendar, but how would we accommodate, or what is your thinking around Zoom meetings if we're going to, if we're not going to be live and in person for the Budget Advisory Committee meetings?
Um, you know, I've been researching some different things and looking at what some other people did around the state. I want to work with, talk to Paul to see what, technologically, what's possible. If you're, you know, like kind of town hall-type things, Zoom meetings, Google meets, like a podcast or Facebook Live, something, you know, that is perhaps a little bit unique. See what makes the most sense and what format would kind of work best to disseminate and get that information out there.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions about the budget development process as laid out here for us? Can we have a motion then, please, to accept the process as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Sue, second by Saff, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. And by the next time we meet, it will probably be different. Keeps Brian busy.
Yeah, one month is like a year in state aid land.
Okay, moving on to the settlement agreement resolution. Carmen, if you'd speak to that, please.
Brian, are you going to do the Capital Outlay?
I think you skipped number three.
Oh, I did. I apologize. I missed that on the agenda. Back up to Schrader Capital Outlay. Thank you.
Perfect. So this... So this is our hundred thousand dollar project, um, to redo some lighting at Schrader. Uh, we opened the bids, uh, right before, uh, week before, uh, Thanksgiving on November eighteenth. Uh, we, we got five electrical contractors to come bid on this hundred thousand dollar project, which is lighting improvements in the N Wing, think of over by the auditorium, the music rooms. Uh, the N Wing, we're going to improve the lighting, move to LED lighting. And then we had an alternate, we weren't sure what the pricing was going to come in at. So we separated out, um, the driveway entrance by Ridge Road to convert those to LED lighting as well. And both came in under the hundred thousand dollar mark, which is great news. So we're going to be able to do both for, uh, ninety thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars with Milerson Electric won the bid. And you can see we had four other bidders and where they came in for their total bids with the alternate and the base bid. So it's our recommendation, they, uh, the board accept this as the lowest responsible bidder. And, uh, we can move forward with this, this work and, uh, get it wrapped up probably by the end of Christmas.
Brian, do we have any experience with Milerson?
We do.
Okay, so very qualified to do this work.
Yep, they were vetted out. They also, I believe, have a county contract. So they've, uh, they've done some work around municipalities.
Any other questions? Can we have a motion then, please, to accept the project bid for Schrader?
I'll make that.
Linda, second by Mike Alt, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. And moving on to the settlement agreement resolution.
So this is, uh, an agreement between the district and, um, and a family, um, regarding, um, a, uh, a, a solution for, uh, that is both acceptable to the district, um, and, uh, and the family. And it is recommended by our attorneys that we sort of move forward in this fashion instead of going to litigation. We discussed this at the end of the last meeting. I, I think, I know a couple of you had already zoomed out before we discussed this, but you can contact me after tonight's meeting if you would like some more information.
Okay, with that, can we have a motion, please, to accept the settlement agreement as proposed? By Maria, second by Sef, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Carmen. And this has been, um, had to be rescheduled and, and delayed a bit. But here we are, Sue, with the first reading of, uh, some policies. I'm sure you'll be happy to walk us through.
I would be happy to do that. There are a total of six policies that we're recommending for, uh, well, not recommending, we're looking at it for our first read. I'll go through them a little bit, each one. Fifty-seven, ten is school bus safety, and this is, uh, additional language regarding idling of school buses, and this was required by the state. And I, I do thank Brian because I know he went back and forth with the state many times, uh, getting the wording correctly. The selection of library and audio visual, visual materials, we just wanted to change the language to make sure that it was consistent with our anti-discrimination policy. And then there are four policies in special education. Two of them are around, um, the committee makeup. So there would be, um, so the preschool special education program, the committee makeup. So the regulations changed to change occasionally as to who's supposed to be on the committee. So we decided to take the committee members out of the policy and put them in the regulations so we don't have to change the policy. And that would be the same for fifty-three seventy, appointment and training of CSE and CPSE members. And then there is a policy on, um, independent, independent education evaluation. And the additions to this policy provide cost and provider information that were not in there before. And then there are students with disabilities participating in district programs. And this ensures that our students with disabilities earning a credential can be part of our graduation ceremonies and participate in other school activities. So those are the six in a nutshell. I don't know if you want to vote on them separately or in their entirety. There's quite a few changes. And by the way, they were recommended, um, by our special education department. And just, just to, in general, clarify our policy, streamline information and respond to some regulation changes from the state. Does anybody have any questions? It's kind of a mouthful, sorry.
No, that's okay, and we've, we've handled this both ways.
Yep.
With encompassing motion and individual motions. Being a first read, maybe a single motion. And what is your thinking? We can.
I'm thinking that's fine. And then when we come in next meeting to do the final, um, to do the second reading and, and make them official, then we can, um, we'll do them individually.
My policy number, okay, I think that makes sense.
Okay.
Okay. Having said that, then, can we have a motion, please, to entertain the first reading and the changes to the policies as presented?
So moved.
Sef, second by Maria, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Nice job, Sue.
Thank you, Mike. I know it's hard not being a member of the committee.
There's no committee competition going on here, correct?
None at all.
So says audit.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Board of Education Goals, which we have continued to work on and are, um, slightly delayed based on the shift into yellow and, um, just the workload and, and, and what people have had to do to accommodate this shift. So, um, we expect that twenty-twenty-one should see, the things that we want to see, especially on the website in terms of the build out of the content. I'll be up to date and accurate and accessible, so, um, we're working, working away and trying to do the things that make the best sense given the conditions of the pandemic. So, um, being flexible and definitely appreciate the support of the administration team that we've had along the way to make that happen. And I think that's adequate for that. So if we move on to board reports, um, Carmen, there isn't a superintendent's report. And I didn't know if you wanted to just provide a brief update for everyone so we can hear from you as well.
Or everyone will hear from me tomorrow morning, um, as we send out our Friday thoughts. But, uh, I think the, the biggest thing that happened this week was the, um, word from the governor on Monday regarding what will happen with school districts when they go to orange or red. Um, it is now much easier to stay open and for kids to come to school, um, when transitioning to orange and red. And as a region, we'll probably all be orange. I'm shocked that we're not there right now. I'm, I'm really surprised that Webster is still yellow, as are most of the other districts in Monroe County. So, uh, but, so that was, that's probably the most important piece. Um, it, if, uh, if it remains this way, um, I, um, I do see a relatively smooth path to staying open. So, so that's, uh, that would be the, the biggest thing that's happened this week.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you. So I think that's, was important to share and certainly everybody's wish that things continue as they are. And thank you to everyone for the enormous efforts that go on behind the scenes in terms of testing and, and, um, shift, Erin is here and has done, um, an enormous amount of work to ensure that our kids are safe and in school and, um, continuing as, as best as circumstances allow. So moving on to board reports, school liaison reports. I think we can just circle around. I know PTSA meetings are not, um, held as frequently as we're used to in the past. But, um, if anybody has anything they'd like to share, please go ahead and do so.
I'll, 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 I'll go.
All right, Sef.
Uh, want to thank the parents at Clem North for their patience and their support as the school seems to have worked out the kinks in their arrival and pickup procedures. And the, the teachers and the students are doing a wonderful job in engaging in, uh, a learning. And thank you to the PTSA for organizing and providing the school with thankfulness pumpkins. And, uh, thank you also has to go to the Hispanic Heritage Committee, which created a fun project for the students. Alma and how she got her name, um, that's the name of the project. It's a wonderful story and it provides an exploration on the importance of one's name and the rich Hispanic, uh, traditions, which are part of the Alma's experience. Now, Clem North is having their PTSA meeting tonight as, as we speak. And on their agenda is a guest speaker from the, uh, Families Igniting Racial Equality or known as FIRE, uh, which is an organization whose mission is to build a racially and economically just community. Uh, also on their agenda tonight is a discussion about a holiday service project that, and they'll be hearing reports on the results of a family, uh, survey. Now, I, I also want to talk about Willink. At, at their last meeting, they reported that the book fair was, uh, successfully being wrapped up. And we got a recap of what was happening at the central PTSA meeting. We also learned that the spirit ware, uh, ha- has been distributed. And there was discussion on how to engage more parents and what could be done to make students feel even more part of Willink. And there was also a discussion about a possibly making coffee with the principal remote, remote so that more, um, um, more, more people could participate. Now, now, Willink PTSA has, uh, put together a short list of ideas on ways to give back to this, uh, for the season. The Bedford and, and, and Bus, um, families, uh, run a non-for-profit, group called the Goodness Initiative that operates Making Spirits Bright at this time of year. And the program is to help holidays for families in our communities. So I'm, uh, if you want more information, uh, check the Willink or the Clem South or the Thomas, um, sign up Genius, Genius links for the holiday gifts. If, if you choose to, the, uh, unwrapped, uh, the, uh, gifts are due, uh, twelve seventeen. Uh, also, uh, if you want to donate non-perishable foods and personal, personal items, there are several little, uh, free pantries located throughout Webster that provide discreet pickup for families in need. And there's also a drop-in locations, uh, throughout Webster. And, um, Hope House, uh, uh, in Webster is looking for some cleaning and food donations this month. So please consider donating, uh, to this organizations, which, which helps so many, uh, families in Webster. And, um, if you want more information, all you have to do is go to the Willink PTSA website. The next meeting for Willink, uh, is January twenty-sixth, and, um, that's my report.
Thank you so much for sharing all that. Anybody want, Sue, okay, sure, jump in.
Yeah, I'll just, um, basically what I had was a lot of what Mike had. The, um, Making Spirits Bright, Bright Program, um, the staff is adopting a family at Schlegel Road School. And also they had a virtual assembly to kick off a charity collection for the Hope House, benefiting the Hope, the Hope House. And the students had to make posters that promoted this event. And the assignment was about showing the importance of kindness and charity, especially at this time of year. Thanks, Sue.
Go next, if you like.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Maria.
Um, at Dewitt, uh, on World Kindness Day this year, the second graders organized a food drive. Their goal was to, to get three hundred items. They actually collected and delivered eight hundred ninety-seven items to Hope House in Webster. Third graders used socks and empty water bottles to make toys for pets. And fifth graders created posters and cards with positive uplifting and inspiring messages for the residents of the Jewish senior life. November twentieth was Dress Like a Teacher Day. So the students dressed up as teachers and there were many of them throughout Willink, uh, excuse me, Dewitt. The next Spirit Day, they're having one every single year, every single month, uh, usually the third, I believe, third Wednesday, it's Friday of the month. They are having Sports Hobby Day. It's on, it's on December eighteenth. Everyone is encouraged to wear clothes to represent what they like or love. For example, if you like to paint, dress like an artist. If you like to play hockey, wear a hockey jersey. There are still many positions that are, need to be filled as opportunities and opportunities to volunteer in other ways. Please check the Dewitt Road PTSA page. The fifth grade Safety Patrol is an excellent role model of care and leadership. They have a voice, student voice, leadership and involvement as a necessary component to their school as a community. And Dewitt Safeties are a group of students who consistently model care, kindness and inclusion. And the next PTSA meeting for Dewitt is on Monday, December fourteenth at six PM, and it is virtual. And I do have a, a quick Thomas one, if that's okay. The Thomas, Willink and, um, Clem South are all banding together to, um, to have, collect items for the, uh, Goodness Initiative that makes Spirits Bright. And they are, um, looking for clean food, some clothing, food donations. And if you would like more information, you can go to the Willink, Thomas or Clem South website. There are also positions here that need to be filled. And the next Thomas meeting is going to be on December tenth at seven PM, and it is also virtual. That's it.
Thank you.
I can do Clem South.
Sure, thanks, Janice.
Uh, tomorrow night actually is Virtual Paint Night. Where they're going to be painting winter snowmen. All the kids have been supplied to any of the kids who want to participate, hybrid or virtual. Um, they're also talking about a snowman building contest this winter pending snow. I know we haven't gotten much yet, but that would run sometime through January. And then extending beyond that is maybe a virtual Read-a-thon and Valentine's for seniors in nursing homes. So just some things I'm looking forward to ahead of this winter.
Thank you. I'll go next. Um, Plank Souths, uh, does not have a meeting in December. Their meeting will be in January, on January thirteenth. Their sleepy time stories with staff are continuing, and they had one on December second. And the families were treated to a story by Mrs. Wendell. On December eleventh, there will be a virtual Family Night of Yoga. Families are encouraged to sign up on Sign Up Genius, and the Zoom link will be sent. Families, they're also at Plank South are again helping to support school number seventeen in the city. Um, they're doing food and clothing drives, and there's also toy donations. Um, the boxes are still in the school's lobby to continue to donate. And lastly, um, right before the holidays, Tammy and I were invited in by, uh, a fourth grader who was the top fundraiser for the American Heart Association, Griffin, who became the principal for the day. So we were invited in and Griffin showed us around the building, brought us into many of the classrooms and really, it was an incredible experience. We got to experience the school through his eyes and he told us what made Plank South so great. And probably the number one thing that made it so great was all the staff and the, the loving family community that it was. And probably the number one thing that made it so great was all the staff and the, the loving family community that it was. So that was a great experience. A surprise meeting, moving on to Spry, uh, their meeting was canceled in, in November. And I am not sure if they have one in December. I haven't been able to communicate with anybody. But I did want to congratulate Jackie Saunders for being the Sanies Middle School Administrator of the Year. And they're also collecting donations for School 17. And that's my report.
Thank you. Yes, that was definitely a very special morning with the principal for a day because we haven't had the opportunity to be in the schools as we typically would have been. And although things look different, the level of engagement and, um, the, just the attention and, uh, the students were just really incredible and impressive. And most of them were working on their, their learning goals. So, um, it was really very special to be able to be in the school and see learning. It looks different, but it's definitely occurring. So special morning. Where are we? How about Mike Alt?
So Plank North had the meeting earlier and it's covered. And then they didn't have one at the end of December or end of November, nothing in December. The next one is in January. So there's nothing new to report from Plank North, other than they are doing well. Um, and they're finding ways of coping and even, um, like we said, they, they're getting the kids outside and they played tag with noodles to maintain a six-foot distance with the, uh, the pool noodle. So they're, they're finding ways of, of coping, which is really good.
Yes, I saw the, the creativity and ingenuity and, and, um, really strong desire to keep everyone connected, remote and in-school learners, has been really impressive. And there's just, uh, such dedication to making that happen. So we're so appreciative. PTSA leadership for all of their efforts. Moving on to Monroe County School Board Association, uh, the Legislative Committee, Sue and Maria.
Maria, you want to start?
Sure. Um, this is a little bit lengthy, but I'll go as quickly as I possibly can. The National Center for Education Statistics announced that there will not be a national assessment of educational progress test this year. It's done every two years. So the next one will be held in 2022. Um, in a report conducted by Connect K-12, only 33% of K-12 students have access to at least one megabyte per second in broadband width. However, 67% still need access to it. And they, um, there's a link to the entire report when you get the legislative, uh, notes so that you can check it out more. The USDA has codified the flexibility in school meals that were granted during the COVID emergency, starting with the 2122 school year. The, the rules would allow for flavored low-fat milk to be part of the reimbursable meal. And half of weekly grains and menus to be whole grain-rich and push the sodium targets. The most recent news post-election is that Senator, Senate Majority Leader Andrea Stewart-Cousins announced that the Senate has obtained supermajority status. Part of that majority came from our area in Monroe County. Um, at 55, excuse me, where, um, Senate seats were flipped in the 55th. And unemployment issues for districts. Districts continue to see increases in unemployment due to COVID-19, but many of them are being contested. Under the CARES Act, districts and BOCs were supposed to get reimbursed for 50% of those costs. However, that's not what is happening. Districts are always, also trying to get state to reimburse for transportation costs, which is what Brian was talking about, related to COVID. Even though it was at the governor's request that the school districts work with current staff to deliver meals. But the governor has said he's willing to work with the districts on the issue. Senate Education Chair Shelley Meyer has introduced legislation to provide free, high-quality broadband to every student and school in New York State during the COVID emergency. It's called the E-Learn Act and is proposed to be funded through an assessment on the annual interstate revenue of the telecommunications service providers. The bill will impact schools and issues will be addressed. Private charter and home-school students would be eligible for the program as also students that are home. And yet it will be up to school districts to arrange for those services. And Sue's got a few more things.
Yes, I just wanted to say that the December meeting was canceled. They wanted to have a panel discussion with new leadership in the county. But they just couldn't get any takers this quickly. So we'll be doing that in January. Vice Chancellor Brown and Regent Norwood are looking for ideas and flexibilities that would be helpful to school districts and provide temporary and/or permanent relief for districts. They're asking us to think outside the box. You know, what education should and/or could look like post-COVID? They want us to keep thinking about that and share ideas and suggestions. Um, and just a reminder to keep the pressure on about the transportation aid. I think we should all just keep writing our representatives and give a shout to the governor as well to say, hey, you got to fix this.
Thanks.
And in, in, in January.
Okay. Labor Relations, Linda and Saif.
Yes, the presenters were from Ferrara and Ferenza. And they provided an overview of the downsizing process, which may be necessary in rough financial times. They pointed out that roughly between 70 and 80% of district costs are staff-related. So staff reductions are a real possibility should state cuts come without relief from the federal government. For the teaching staff, which is not a merit-based system, the rule is last in, first out. And seniority is not governed by total length of service in the district, but by tenure area. Now for administrators, they're not bound by the, um, Part 30 rules. And tenure area is set by the school district and BOCs. And it may be defined narrowly or broadly, but it must be consistently applied. They detailed other rules that affect calculations of staff service, such as part-time service, bargaining agreements, substitute service, federally funded positions, breaks in service, unpaid leaves and, and dual tenure areas. Now, the Board of Education must take formal action to abolish a position and place the employee affected on the preferred eligibility, preferred eligibility list for seven years. And collective bargaining agreements may require notice, but there's no statutory notice is required for abolishing these positions. So that's what we heard at Labor Relations.
Okay, um, information exchange. We heard, um, from the tech teams at the Rochester City School District and their challenges in the digital divide. So they looked at the, at the problem, the challenge as a four-legged stool and how they were going to address professional development, hardware issues, internet access and digital content. So they created teams and it, for 26,000 students and 26 different languages. They reached out, they, they managed to, um, deliver MiFi's and in Chrome boxes and whatever was needed. So it's, it's a incredible challenge that they're working to overcome. But the, the presentation was extremely informative and definitely highlighted challenges that are a few miles, you know, from, from us. So although all districts have faced the same thing, um, it's definitely, you know, most households have a cell phone for internet access in the city. So their, their challenges are quite exaggerated from what the challenges that we had to meet. The next information exchange meeting is January 13th on virtual learning. So I'm sure that will be informative as well. And I think for the interim future, all meetings will be via Zoom, which, and they may stay that way. It makes it easier for people to attend, especially if they're midday. So those are changes that are being talked about.
Amy, can I just add?
Oh, yes, yes.
A couple of things too. One of the things I found particularly interesting is, as much as we don't like remote learning or e-learning, they clearly said there are some students in the city school district that benefit from those. And, and they talked about the student who may have a young child at home who now has the flexibility to learn while they have a child and the improvements in remote learning have helped. They talked about students who actually have to have jobs to support their family and the benefit of, again, the enhanced remote learning, uh, for those. So, or they also talked about some of that, um, need remedial English and other skills as gap closure to help them, uh, and they can get that part of it via e-learning. So, um, there were actually quite a few benefits that they highlighted for e-learning for their population. But the eye-opener for me was trying to do the learning in 25 different languages or understand that there are people whose primary languages are very different from English or 26. So Carmen, when you think you have, and team, when you think you have a rough day, imagine translating it into 25 different languages.
So that's true. And there was another benefit that was tied to the graduation rates, Mike, similar to what you're talking about where typically if students fall behind and don't want to stay in school as an older learner, it's easier to do that remotely and not lose their status and, and hopefully see themselves to graduation. So that was kind of another silver lining that they're experiencing. Okay, Executive Committee was very much about what you've addressed, you've all addressed in terms of advocacy and legislation. So there will probably, I hope, be a coordinated effort to advocate for relief for PPE and, and COVID-related costs as well as transportation. Two position papers have been developed, one around mandates and the other around funding and the funding streams that are diverted from public education with charter schools. So both of those will be adopted by MCSBA. And then also for the steering committee, the last meeting we had, Dr. Mendoza was there and was able to talk to everybody about everything that we're, everything that we're experiencing right now. So, um, people definitely appreciated having that, that audience with him. Moving on to our own standing district committees audit. Does anybody like to speak to that?
We haven't had a meeting since we last reported, I believe, right?
Right.
Okay, so we, I, nothing right now?
No report.
I must have put something.
No report.
Okay. And policy we heard from and will hear from again. Budget. It's without question. Budget advisory, we'll look forward to that. And, and as we've done in the past, we'll rotate. Strategic planning, we had a meeting and have another one currently scheduled.
I, I have a little update that I got from Larry today. If that's okay.
Absolutely.
So the two goals that we have this year, well, one of them is really just to step back and support the tremendous efforts that are being expended on behalf of our, our students this year during this pandemic. And the second goal is to learn what we can from the, about the future of education from this pandemic. Both the challenges and opportunities and keep in mind the shifting career landscapes, emergent technologies and changes in higher education. We also will be expanding our core team membership in the new year. And we will be postponing the biannual, um, survey, which was scheduled for the spring, with, with the next year. And that's it.
Thank you. And when, Linda, would you like to share an update?
Sure. Um, our next meeting is on December 9th. It'll be at noon via Google Meet. The, the committee is currently working on, um, completing some of the goals that need to be met by the end of the year. When was given, was granted a federal grant last December. And in order to continue the payments for that grant, there are certain milestones that they have to get to. Being in a pandemic, it's been a little bit more challenging, but, um, also the, the regulations around that have loosened up a little bit. But, um, one of the goals of, uh, the programming committee was to design we card signage for businesses that sell alcohol or, and/or tobacco products and provide them so that they could put them into their storefront windows. So members of the committee, excuse me, will be visiting all of the local businesses in the community by the end of the year and providing them with these we card signs. And also, um, just kind of introducing ourselves to the different businesses in town and find out from them, what are the challenges that they're facing and what, how can when maybe help them? And, and also inform them about what when does. So look for those in the, in the next coming weeks. That should be done by December 31st. And that's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you. I have a brief update from the Fire Committee, Families Igniting Racial Equity. We had a planning meeting where Terry, Dr. McCarthy, created breakout rooms and everyone in attendance could just talk about different concepts and different priorities in forming a mission and vision and what that would look like for the whole district. So that work is continuing and the next meeting is December 15th. Some of the, some of the work around the individual committees, Black and African-American heritage, curriculum, family engagement, hiring and recruitment and Hispanic heritage planning. So all five committees are all working, um, within their committee structure to expand and grow and develop those foundations that will enable the work to continue in a, in a way that's seamless and consistent across the district. And as Mike had mentioned, uh, the community read aloud that occurred for Hispanic heritage with Alma and how she got her name. I believe there were over 300 people who attended. And of those 300, students could pre-record and share videos of their own names and how they got their names and what it meant to them. So links in barcodes were created so that schools could share amongst themselves and within each other. So if a student wanted to see the other students in their school and their videos, all they had to do was download the barcode. So technologies played a great role in enabling some of these activities to take place when they were looking very different just a short year ago. So many thanks to, to Dr. McCarthy and Lucy Campfey for their district leadership. And, um, the work continues. So with that, that leads us to the consent agenda, which everyone has had a chance to review and ask questions of. I believe all is in order. Can we have a motion, please, to accept the consent agenda? Maria and a second by Sue, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, that brings us to the conclusion of the business. Okay, that brings us to the conclusion of the business portion of the meeting. So we'll convene and move into our academic data workshop. So can we have a motion, please, to adjourn?
So moved.
Linda, second by Michael. So on behalf of this Board of Education, happy holidays to all of our Webster families. Stay safe, stay healthy. And although celebrations will look different this year, we hope that they're meaningful and special and that everyone enjoys their time together. Thank you very much.